Welcome, everyone, and would you please stand for the pledge? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have before you a recommended agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
No changes or additions.
Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Tom, a second from Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous. First on our agenda is school board recognition with Dr. Bearden.
Okay, first, good evening, everyone. This is kind of an unusual board meeting for us tonight. We've removed items that we did not have to cover, one of them being recognitions of students and employees. But since our board members are here, I do want to recognize our board members. This is School Board Appreciation Week in the state of Georgia, and certainly want to thank Tom and Wes, Kristen and Nancy for all their hard work and commitment. Darla is unable to be here tonight, but for those who are watching this recording at home, I just want to remind you, this is the 2019 State of Georgia Governance Team of the Year, and rightfully so, very well-earned distinction. Our board members work very hard to serve this community, and we certainly appreciate everything they do. So we're not going to do a formal recognition, so we're not going to shake hands or anything. We gave them their gifts before, but thank you, guys, for all you do. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved. Second.
Motion from Wes and a second from Tom. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Public participation, I assume, none? Okay, and first on our presentations tonight is Larry Hamel with our finance report and our audit results.
We're going to go ahead and bring up Adam.
Okay, perfect. That's fine.
Is there Adam?
I'm here.
All right, great. So tonight, we're going to have Adam from Golden and Jenkins present you the 2019 financial statements, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Adam. Adam, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Thank you to the board. I appreciate you all accommodating me this evening, doing this remotely. First off, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, feel free to stop me as I go through, certainly if you've got any questions, and also if you do have trouble hearing and may need to repeat something, so just let me know. You should have a couple documents in your packet. One is our auditor's discussion and analysis. I'll refer to it as an AD&amp;A requirement bit. And then you also have the annual financial report of the school district for the year ended June 30, 2019. I'm going to mostly focus on the AD&amp;A, so if you want to follow along with me there, it's kind of a summary of the audit, the results, and some of our required communications. If you will, so start on page two in the AD&amp;A. This is information about our firm. We have a growing governmental practice and a longstanding governmental practice niche within our firm that provides over 100,000 hours of service annually now to over 450 governments. So there's some, you know, some of the governments that make up that list as far as the type of governments. And down at the bottom of the page, you've got your engagement team leaders, of course, myself being the engagement lead partner. On page three, this is other information about our firm and the way of other industries we serve and other services that we provide. We are a full-service CPA firm, but with a large niche practice within governmental accounting, reporting, and auditing. Turning to the next page. So the financial statements are the school district's responsibility. Annually, the school district, in accordance with state law, has to get an annual financial audit, and the school district's finance department is to put together a set of financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility is to conduct our audit, perform that test work, and then render an opinion based on the fairness of those financial statements. We did render an opinion. It is technically called an unmodified audit report, and in layman's terms, we often call that a clean opinion. What that means is the financial statements, as of them for the year ended June 30, 2019, are fairly stated in all material respects. Turning to the next page, this just hits some of the highlights real quickly on some of the financial results of the district for the year ended June 30, 2019. The district-wide financial statements, so of course, you've got your fund financial statements on a modified accrual-based accounting, and then you've got the government-wide that are full accrual, includes all the capital assets and long-term obligations of the school district there as well. The government-wide financial statements ended with total assets of about $1.4 billion, offset by liabilities of about $1.3 billion, leaving a total net position, or equity, if you will, of about $52.6 million. Of course, like any school district, a large amount of that is made up of capital assets and net of its related debt, which was almost $500 million. About $83 million is restricted by outside parties, leaving approximately $526 million as an unrestricted deficit net position. Now, one of the reasons why the deficit is not unusual with school districts these days, having to record net OPEB liabilities and net pension liabilities, that the standard-setting bodies, being the GASB, has said that we've got to start recording these last couple of years. So those are large liabilities. It hasn't really changed the funding requirements by the governments. You're still paying on a pay-as-you-go basis, but GAAP has just required that those liabilities be reported in these full accrual financial statements. So when we talk about net position or that equity, down in the next paragraph, or the paragraph at the bottom of the page, you'll see the change in that net position for the year was an increase of about $51.3 million. On the next couple pages, this is some of the highlights of the general fund, of course, being the main operating fund of the school district. You'll see there some analysis of the general fund revenues and how those are broken down between the different types of revenues, being state and federal and local sources, and also comparing this year to last year. And then on the next page, conversely, we talk about the general fund expenditures, and you'll see there in the paragraphs, some comparisons and breakdowns of the different general fund expenditures for the year, as well as comparison of this year and last year for each of the different components of the expenditures, excluding instruction. Instruction is, of course, talked about in the paragraphs above in specific detail. On the next page, page eight, this is really just a Cliff Notes version of the financial statements, footnotes, if you will. So as you're looking at the financial statements, you can refer back here and see what each of the footnotes are telling you as the readers and also the constituents of the Port of Education, citizens of the county. If you'll turn a couple pages over to page 10 with me. On this page, this starts our required communications. I'm not going to go into detail of each one of these, but I do always like to touch on a couple. On page 11, I'm sorry, on page 12, at the top there, it asks us to report on any significant difficulties encountered in the audit or any disagreements with management as we conducted the audit. I'm happy to say that we had no such items. We didn't have any difficulties. Finance Department and everyone outside of finance that we encountered were completely cooperative and forthcoming and timely with the information that we needed to conduct the audit. So we really appreciate that, and of course, and then also, we had no disagreements with management related to any accounting principles or treatments of transactions. We all are in agreement on these financial statements in the end. At the bottom page there, we did have some audit adjustments. We have made those adjustments. Finance Department and us, we met on those. Those have been posted to the general ledger of the school district and also reflected in these financial statements to ensure their accuracy. Turning over to page 13, we did have one management letter comment. This is not something that the standards would require as any kind of finding or anything like that. Just in the world today with the increased cybersecurity threats that are happening, you know, in all facets of companies and governments, et cetera, this is becoming increasingly more of a threat. And so we're just making a management letter comment there, recommendation, just to make sure you're assessing your cybersecurity frameworks, as well as even engaging maybe outside parties to do independent monitoring, maybe some GAAP analysis, et cetera, related to that, to this emerging threat. And then on page 14, we did have, we did have a couple findings. They start on page 14. All of the findings that we had were accounting in nature. And again, so just like the audit adjustments that I mentioned, we've gone over all of these with Larry and his staff, and all of these corrections have been made in the financial statements. So the corrective actions have essentially taken place. So we're happy to report that. Again, they're accounting in nature. They're resulting in the audit adjustments, and these days, in the auditing standards that we follow, we just, we're required to actually cite those as findings for adjustments that needed to be made for the financial statements. So you'll see the details of that first one there. I will note the largest of those, if you look down through the bullets there, the largest of them had to do with cash, and, you know, I mention this because I know cash, you know, it's a highly liquid asset, obviously, and it can be kind of sensitive. It really was just a reporting situation, and cash overall for the school district was reported correctly in total. It was a classification thing. Again, you're dealing with fund accounting and a classification situation between the funds, as well as the inter-fund transactions of those different funds. But again, those have been corrected and reported in the statements. On the next page, revenue recognition. This is probably one of the more complicated standards that GASB has put out there, and it has to do with when you recognize revenue versus when you recognize it under modified accrual as essentially unavailable revenue. And we did happen to make an adjustment of that, again, an accounting entry that was corrected as well. That's the revenue one. On the expenditure side, we also did make an adjustment there, and that was through our testing of dispersment subsequent to year-end and ensuring that all of the payable accounts and liability accounts were properly reflected, and an adjustment was needed there as well. The next page, starting on page 16, and this really is the rest of my presentation. The rest of these pages are all the new, I mentioned GASB, they're all the new standards that are coming out in the future related to, that the GASB has put out. I'm not going to go into detail on each one of these either. I will just point on a couple, and it's really the two on page 16 there. The two largest ones that probably the school districts are, is facing in the next year or two is GASB 84 and GASB 87. You'll see as items A and B there. GASB 84 has to do with fiduciary activities, so all of the, maybe the club accounts, et cetera, that are being held at the different schools, that will require different reporting for next year. We've met with the finance department and just to stay ahead of the curve on what needs to be done there. And then GASB 87, having to do with leases, this standard is going to require different reporting in the financial statements, having to do with leases. And so what we're doing is just encouraging all of our governments to inventory those leases and compile that information for that analysis to properly implement that standard and make sure it gets reported correctly. And again, the rest of the standards, they're through here. Certainly, if the finance department or anyone on the board has a question about any of those, you know, down the road, and as we go through this next year, certainly reach out, and we'd be happy to help there. But that is the end of what I have to present, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Well, just on the findings, a lot of them seem to be construction-related, which is something we have been doing and we will continue to do. So I'm not sure why it was this year, was it the sheer volume? Do you think it was just a lot? We've got so much coming and going. Any idea why this year we had some numbers that had to be shifted from?
So the adjustments that we encountered this year?
Yeah, like, is it just the sheer volume of what we're doing, or?
Maybe, because this is the first time I've actually looked at something like this. Explain how the adjustment works. Like, you guys go through it, and you see it, and then you come back to Larry and say, hey, look, these adjustments need to happen. And then back to Mrs. Morrissey's question about, you know, what was different this year?
Yes, so the actual process, if you will, we conduct our audit testing, and in, kind of in layman's terms, what the standards say have to be reported as a finding, I call it the oops standard. So if, you know, auditors cannot be a part of the internal control process of the auditee. The internal controls of the auditee should be in place, obviously, to ensure that the financial statements are accurately reported. So anything that we find during our audit, and of course, we can apply materiality, so it has to be a certain magnitude, but anything we identify in our testing, again, and we're not a part of the internal control process that was not identified before us, we have to at least consider as a finding. And when it gets to a certain size, we actually are, our hands are tied, and we have to make that a finding. And so that's kind of the, well, that's the requirements. And then the process is, is of course, we identify, we find something that we think may need to get corrected, and we bring that to the finance, you know, finance director or CFO's attention, discuss it with them, make sure we're all on the same page, and then, of course, that adjustment gets made on both sides. And so that's kind of the process. As far as us having the three findings this year and the adjustments, you know, I know obviously with the finance department this year, there's been, you know, some change. Larry kind of came in, you know, with a short year and kind of in the middle of the audit and so forth. And so, again, going back to my comment on, I kind of call it the oops standard. I think this is just some of the stuff that just with the transition of things were identified by us that just kind of fell through the cracks a little bit.
And then, like you mentioned, there's new stuff coming up for next year, so sometimes, sometimes when the rules change, it's hard to get used to them. I've seen in other situations where something changed, and then three years later, like, oh, wait, we should have been changing this years ago, and now we catch it. And it's not like it's a mistake, it's just things have changed how it was done in the past, and keep going the new way until someone says, oh, wait, that's not the way it's done anymore. So, all right, so, but nothing to be concerned about, bottom line.
No, ma'am. I mean, these are things that, you know, the bar is set pretty low, I'll be honest with you, as far as what we have to cite as findings. I can't say that I 100% agree with the standard setters on that, on that point. Nonetheless, we had to make them, but all of these have been corrected, and so we're, you know, on good footing with these going forward. I think that between the finance department and our team, we're on the same page and understand kind of what, you know, what needs to take place for these to be corrected going forward.
Good. What explains our AAA bond rating and all that? So thank you so much, that helps a little bit. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for joining us remotely tonight, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Because we got to get used to this electronic world, huh? Right. Our kids are like totally cool with it, used to it.
And now we have the finance report.
Yes, the finance report. Here we go. So in front of you, you have the February 2020 financial, financial statements for the month of February 2020, and of course, we always keep in mind goal three. And if you look at the third page, which is the cash flow analysis for the month of February 2020, you notice at the bottom, our cash equivalents is about $140 million. This time last year, we're at about $127.8. All the activity in there is pretty much normal. We're a little bit ahead of schedule on the cash receipts, and we'll show that in a little bit. And we're just a tad ahead of last year with expenditures as well, and you'll see that as well. So as you can see, we've collected about 387, almost 387.6 million dollars year-to-date. That leaves us 96 million left to collect. We're collecting at this point at 80.01%. This time last year, we were at 78.69, so we're well ahead of schedule on our collections.
Yeah. So we're against that 75%.
On the expenditures, you can see we're at 66.96, which is about right. I calculate 67, you round it up. This time last year, we were at 66.92, so we're starting to flatten out that expenditure curve that we had earlier in the year, and we're starting to catch up to the point where we're right on track exactly where we should be expenses, or just barely above it. I'm hoping we can keep that number there or below going for the rest of the year.
Well, with us being out of school for these few weeks, obviously, we're still paying our employees because there's still, teachers are still working, but does that cut down on our substitutes by some level, save a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. You're going to save some on substitutes, you're going to save some on energy costs, you know, we're not running buses like we were before. Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a little bit of savings, yeah.
Well, and then if you look at gas prices, gas prices are down 50% per barrel right now. Now, we're slowly seeing that transition into the market. Yesterday, I got gas for $1.96. I think I saw it for $1.94. You're noticing it's incrementally going down piece by piece. But my understanding, the spot check on gasoline for diesel is down dramatically, so that's going to even go to ours better with that, as much gas as we would burn during the year. And who knows where that's going to be a year from now? Who knows where anything is going to be a year from now?
So I'm going to be optimistic, that's all good. Is there any increased costs worth having with this situation, or is it by and large?
So the reciprocal problem is, with everything being down because of the market and everything, interest rates are down. We are probably not going to meet our budget for interest this year, and we're dramatically going to have to cut back what our predictions are for next year. It's just so much unknown right now. I mean, they, the federal government has cut their rates by 1.5% just in the last 30 days. So we are down to a 0 to a 2.25 range at the federal rate, which means we're not going to get really anything for the money we have out there. Now, the good thing is, is what we do have out there on some of our treasury bonds that are coming due the next couple of months, we've got good rates on that. But right now, because the market's such in fluctuations, based on talking to our invested consultant person that we hire along with Gwinnett County as well, using the same person, he's projecting that we probably need to dump it in LGIP funds for now and just keep it there until the market can stabilize, so we can get a better idea where the market's going to go. If the market does go up, then we can jump out LGIP real quick, capture some of that increase in the rates, and then down the road, we can just modify as it goes. I would imagine if the market does go up, we don't want to put too much into the market too fast if the rates do go up faster than we predict.
Yeah, makes sense.
If you look at the cash balances for these accounts, this time last year, debt service was at $24.6 million. SPOS was actually only at 512K. SPOS 5 was at 5.25, and overall, we had about 30.4. So this is a combination of collecting a lot more money in the last several months than we had predicted in those different accounts, SPOS and debt service, based on the mileage rate.
Well, that could be good if SPOS takes a little dip right now.
Yes, and we can talk to that later if you want. Right now, on the investment analysis...
The grocery store is this weekend, I don't know.
Well, I'm predicting a great TP run's going to actually give us a boost, maybe. We'll see. Actually, Jeff made that comment the other day, I mean, when I told him some stuff. In the, in that investment summary, you will notice that we're down to $176 million total. That's because the Fund 306 fund you see in there that has about $40 million, this time last year, we had $143.6. We had all that money that we were sitting on getting ready to do all these projects, and as you can see, we spent a lot of that money down last year. On the SPOS, good news there. If you look at the total average versus the last 12-month average, so this time last year, we were at $3.29 million. So the total average, we're ahead by about $64,419 a month, but if you look at the last 12-month average, we're ahead by $166,415 per month. In the last 12 months, we're about $101, almost $102,000 higher than the overall average so far. So there's been a huge uptake. Where that goes from here, I don't know. We'll have to wait and see how that goes out. Of course, with, you know, with everything being shut down and stuff, we're definitely going to see a hit on the sales tax going forward.
Yes.
As you can see, here's the elementary, any balances. It's normal. We had about $4.8 million last year in those accounts. For the middle schools, and both for the high schools, the revenue expenditure is about normal on those activities. The high schools were slightly ahead at, excuse me, middle schools were slightly ahead at about 2.1, and the high schools were ahead right now, and last year, they were about 4.26. I do imagine that those receipts and expenditures will look a lot different the next couple of months going forward. And overall, the balances are about par where they were last year, minus a couple points. Either way, as you know, the middle schools had gone down a little bit, elementarys have gone up. But that's a financial statement for 2020. I will open up the questions, future questions, comments, thoughts.
I only have a thing that's nagging me right now. He talked about the club accounts for next year.
What are the changes?
Is that a different amount of money than in the school account? So...
My expectation it is. At the school level, you have two types of accounts. One's called governmental, one's called agency. What they've done is they changed the definition of what an agency fund is, and they now call it fiduciary. If it's a fiduciary fund, it's different than an agency fund in that you have to provide a cash flow analysis, and then before, you didn't. So in the agency fund, all we would do is say, we have X amount of dollars, and then on the financial statements, as we presented them, we would say, we have X amount of liability, and they would always equal, because all you're really doing is just holding the cash for the clubs. Now, as a fiduciary, you have more responsibility in terms of what information you have to provide. And now you have to do on there is go do a cash flow, and there's some other revenue expense reports you have to do that you didn't have to do before. So that just means more information we have to provide the auditors, and more tables they got to put in the financial statements for whoever looks at them.
So will the clubs be doing that extra work, then?
No, we will. We will. What we'll do is we'll pull the information out of our financial statements that are produced at the school level with a school software, and we'll put it in the format to give to the auditors, so they can put it in the format they need for the audit.
You'll do all that one time, not every month?
No, we'll do that all once. We won't do that month, month. Okay. That answers the question. Okay.
But you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we hired the former CFO from Cherokee County to be kind of a part-time internal auditor for us, and that has made a big difference. I mean, you know, he's in those schools on a pretty regular basis, making sure...
Well, I went through some training, right?
Yeah, yeah. I saw all of the bookkeepers been trained, and so that was a really smart investment, just to make sure that, you know, we're handling those funds appropriately.
Seems like forever ago. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Larry.
All right.
Next, we have Matt Wark, and he's going to tell us about the safety and security entrance upgrades and modifications at Forsyth County Middle and High Schools.
Good evening.
Hello.
I just want to give you an update as it is been bid out, these projects, and we would like to recommend that the board approve HCR construction for the general, as the general contractor, for the safety and security entrance upgrades. These are our vestibules. As you know, last year, we took on all the elementary schools, and we completed those before school started. We are following the same timeline with the middle school and high schools. There should be no reason why we cannot finish them as well before school starts. The middle schools and high schools are not nearly as obtrusive as the elementaries. The middle schools, we will have to use the same type of frames in some of them that already, that were built a little bit older to where they don't have the vestibule, but the high schools, we will not. So they'll be, it's a lot cheaper, and it is a lot, lot less worrisome about getting it done before school starts. And also, HCR construction, we used them last year. They did all of our fine arts modifications. They did an excellent job, great company to work with, and they also did the additions and renovations for the G-Nets over at the Hill Center. Met all their timelines, we were very pleased, so we're excited that they, that they got this bid as well.
Thank you. With that, I'd recommend approval. We have a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Tom and a second from Kristen. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. And next is, also with Matt, he's got the Liberty and North Forsyth Middle School CTA E lab additions.
Again, this is recommended for the board to award Liberty and North Forsyth Middle School CTA lab addition and modifications, just to make sure everyone is clear that this is, they are both having an addition being put on the school, as well as the modification of the existing labs. And that does include extending the corridors, so that this is kind of an extensive project, as well as we did decide to move forward with one of the add alternates and adding a greenhouse adjacent to the Liberty Middle School addition, so that's also involved in this cost. We will recommend to award this to Ward Humphrey and corporate. We have not worked with this company prior to this. We have done our research on them, and they do check out, so we're, we just have not had the opportunity to work with them. They are out of Marietta. They are out of Marietta. We've talked to our architect, they've reviewed all the documents and everything. And jobs like this, we're actually kind of happy to see what other contractors can do to come into the county, provides that wider scope when we have multiple projects. But again, we, we are happy with Ward Humphrey, and we would ask for that recommendation.
Recommend approval. We have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from, okay, I'm sorry.
Just a question. So that makes me feel better.
Well, hang on a second. We have a motion from Wes and a second from Tom? Now, any further questions?
So that was, that grand total was the addition and the greenhouse?
And the greenhouse.
That makes me feel a little bit better about my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Much better.
When does construction start, Wes?
We will start in March. Those, we're not able to impede school, so we're going to start the additions and things. We'll start moving on that, we'll stay out of the way. We have it in, in March 20th, I'll double check, but, yeah, right now, we have March and April, starting in April. And then the other one, we will start after school is out, obviously.
Yeah, the high school.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering about this one.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt, quick question, I wanted to wait till we're done with those.
It's over.
So this, well, because that's why I waited on purpose. So this downtime, is this helping facilities, is it squeaking any things in, other than cleaning, but?
And to be honest with you, it's really, it is really helping from a maintenance side. We're going to be caught up on all of our work orders. However, at the end of this week and into next week, we're going to move into all of our preventative maintenance that we have kind of put off because we've been so busy. So from a maintenance side, it's fantastic. So, I mean, I want to say fantastic, obviously, but from a work standpoint, that is. And from a construction side, it's not raining. The only worry we have with that is we do have to pay attention to the worldwide events because we get our steel and all these other things. It all does play with each other. Not, one company has not brought any issues to us yet, but again, that is something that we're paying attention to. We're telling them to go ahead and place your orders on things that you may be getting overseas, because if there's a delay, we want to know that ahead of time. So that we're playing both worlds, construction and maintenance, but we, right now, we're getting things done. That's what we're happy with.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Next is points of information with Dr. Bearden.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I do want to make a comment to our public who may be, excuse me, watching this recording. You know, all of our information about what's going on right now is posted on our website. We try to keep that current on a daily basis. But I just wanted to make a statement. We are going to be learning from home until Friday, April 3rd, as of today. That was announced earlier today. Our hope, our plan, is to resume normal school operations on Monday, April 13th, after spring break. Again, that's our hope and our plan, but we're going to have to continue what's monitoring, monitoring what's going on throughout our world and throughout our country. IT'S Learning, our learning management system, is being utilized by school systems all over the world. I know our parents and students and teachers know this has created some capacity issues. IT'S Learning is working very hard to resolve. In fact, we had a conference call at 4:30 this afternoon. They shut down this afternoon at 5:00 to try to get everything in working order for later this evening and tomorrow. So I hope they have found the solution they're looking for. We are finding, once the European schools start completing their work around 10 o'clock our time, 11 o'clock our time in the morning, that enables more capacity for schools throughout the United States, and we're having less issues from 10 or 11 o'clock on. I say all that because this is an unprecedented situation, and I so appreciate the patience of our students and our families, and I hope folks will continue to be patient. We, as a school system, will continue to be flexible, we will be adaptable. IT'S Learning is not the only resource teachers are using. I know parents and students know that. And in fact, we're meeting tomorrow morning, teleconference with all of our principals just to kind of review how things are going, and again, to make sure we're sending the message to our teachers to continue to be flexible, adaptable, and for everybody to be patient. But I do want to thank our staff, and specifically our teachers, they are working so hard to make this a very relevant, engaging experience for our students. I'm getting lots of positive feedback from our community, far more positive feedback than those that are not so positive, and I really do appreciate all the work by our staff. We know this is not a perfect situation or an ideal situation, but I think we have to keep it in perspective as well. You know, when you look at the community in which we live, most of our students have devices, most of our students have connectivity, most of our students have a place to live and food to eat and people to take care of them. That's not the case all over the world. And I think we need to make sure we keep that in its proper perspective, that we're very, very fortunate in many ways. And I'm so thankful for, to our community. Many of you have reached out to us, asking us how you can help continue to take care of our families in need. The recommendation is, if you go to the website of The Place of Forsyth County, our Forsyth County United Way, they're partnering with us to help those families who are in need. I know many of you in our community have done that. We so appreciate it. Both organizations are doing very well right now, but as this goes on, the tendency is that supplies start to become depleted. So we ask you to continue to give what you can to help all of our families. We're going to get through this, but we'll get through it better if we continue to be kind to one another, understanding, helpful, patient, and encouraging. And I want to wish all of our students and families the very best. Please reach out to us, connect with your teachers, connect with your principals. If you're having any issues, you have any questions, we're all in this together, and we're all going to continue to work together. The number one priority for all of us all is let's take good care of ourselves, let's work hard to take care of one another, and thank all of you for supporting Forsyth County schools. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you. Should we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel as per our affidavit?
So moved.